Okay, um, roll call the members. We got Tom McLaughlin, we got Butch Gushen, we got David Kemp. Oh, we should do the pledge of allegiance.
Get up for that.
... A pledge of allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic of which is trans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Play ball.
All right, so review of the minutes of May 4th. And I didn't get to read those. That was the one. Dave probably has something to say about those because, I know you've had some particulars. Oh, I had everything sewn in order. Great, does anybody want to make a motion on the minutes?
I'm sure they'd be accepted.
Okay, do I have a second?
I wasn't here, so, but can I can second it?
Well, I'll second that then. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're now abstaining because I wasn't here.
Good, so, here we go. ZBA rules of procedure. And did anybody get a chance to read those over?
Yep.
We have two other copies of it there previously. I didn't...
June, could you point out what's new here?
So, um, when we went over this last time, there was just a change on the first page, officers number three adding in that the clerks to be the town planner. Because rather than, um, before I think it said, I can't remember now what it said. Because if it was an all volunt, if we didn't have staff, it would be, you know, one of you guys would be the clerk. So, you're basically, we had talked about that at the last meeting, to say that the, you want the clerk to be the staff, basically, or somebody I can designate it to.
Sure.
To help, you know, do the, all the meeting prep stuff.
Yeah.
And then, I believe there was one other, there was a page number change, and I think that was, that was it. So, this is basically, there was maybe one other, it's just sort of typo or something in there that I found, but I don't remember what exactly. So, this is basically the rules of procedure from the Office of Planning and Development now, they've changed names again, so...
Sure, okay. Okay, so, do you want a motion on this, an adoption, or what?
Yes, you guys need to adopt it, and then, it has to, I believe, you know, we'll add in the date of adoption, and then, it has to be filed with the town clerk, so it's officially on record. So, you've had these rules, the problem is we couldn't find the official one, you know, something very similar.
True.
So, we just felt like a chance to kind of re...
Okay, does anybody...
Everything's in place.
Anybody want to make a motion, you can drop it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the rules of procedure.
I'll second it.
Dave, seven seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And then, with that, do you want to talk about the application form?
Sure.
Which, I have copies, I think. Do you have them in your packet there? I guess probably don't.
I did, yep. Yeah, oh, that's why. I'm dealing with your packet. You left us here. I had my own, and it was all in great order.
Yeah, I did it, a new one, so... I made some changes today, so maybe I left them downstairs. My apologies.
Okay, here's the procedure we got.
Apologies for that. Here we go.
Sure.
So, what we're trying to do with these forms is sort of standardizing a front page. This will be similar for planning board forms, for subdivision, site plan review, and zoning board, because it's really the same app, same information that we need to collect, name, project name, that kind of thing, map and lot number, you know, just basic property information. I'm trying to, we've had a few times when people get a little mixed up between applicant sometimes and a property owner. We always want to have clarity that the property owner has to sign off. If there's any registered licensed professionals, surveys, engineers, attorneys, you know, they, getting their information. So, the other, where there's boxes for this, we're turn, we will turn this eventually, once we finalize it, into a fillable form, the PDF form that will be on the website.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, because most people are now just printing it out and then saying, "See attached." So, the other problem is we get pages and pages, blank form and lots of attachments, so we want to have a...
That's interesting.
Getting it a little more digital.
Yeah.
And then, they can email it to us, as well as we want paper copies too, so we can have things to hand out. But, site information is a little bit new, and this might not be applicable for every case, but, you know, acreage, frontage, impervious surface, parking spaces, that kind of thing. And then, the second page is really the signatures. Sometimes there's a designated, authorized sort of agent on behalf of the property owner, so...
Yes, I like that, that's nice and clear.
So, just trying to make it a little more clear, and numbers of copies we need.
It is confusing.
The one thing that is, that we're changing, attached to this, will be a table of the fees. So, we're going to have a new table that just kind of covers all the permit fees, for building permits, planning board applications, zoning boards. Those need to be approved by the select board, so we're looking to make some changes. I don't think we've raised the fees in some time, they might not go for it, but there's costs for...
Is that going to be more than one page?
Uh, I have building permit on one side, another application on the other.
Okay.
And then, on this one, we had, trying to, I see a little bit of a problem on the bottom of the next page, of application for variance, and the box is covering a page number, so well, that's an easy, you know, this, again, this is just some last-minute formatting changes, but trying to have these fill-in boxes that more clearly ask applicants to answer the questions about a variance, or if it's a special exception, the next, you know, the part B. Sometimes it could be appeal from administrative decision, or the equitable waiver of dimensional requirements. So, eventually, as we turn this into a fillable form, these boxes would be where somebody could...
That would be really good. Then it really cuts down on all the verbiage to attach.
Yeah, I think it'll help, help applicants.
You're still going to get...
It's what most towns are doing now, and kind of make it, you know, then they can, you know, they can download it, fill it in, and then save it, and email it, and then we have it digitally, we're not having to scan it, and we're clean copy for you guys to see, and just for the records too, so... I'm trying to work on building up a more, better digital set of files, and it, we need to still keep paper files, but, you know, we're, so much things now are emailed, so it gives us a chance to...
June, would people be able to digitally fill in these boxes?
Yeah, they should be able to, you know, like an online PDF form that they can...
Right now...
Are we going to accept a digital signature on the previous page?
Um, I think automatically we'll put in the ability for a digital signature, so yes, I would say so, yeah.
Okay.
But, we, they still need to come in or mail in, you know, fee, the money. We do, when there's, when there's a, any kind of a plot plan, which we have tonight, you know, we want to get copies of that kind of stuff too. You know, there's, we ask for multiple copies to kind of save down, save on our time of standing at the copy machine, but, but yet not getting bombarded with stuff too, so...
Okay, what do we have to do here, just to...
Just acknowledge, I guess, this and give your approval for it, if you're...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Move your approval.
Move your approval, okay, second. Yep, all favor, aye, great. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, that's good. That's a nice step up.
It's actually taken quite a bit of time to put it together, but it's more than...
Yes, and then you can list shows.
Well, we're looking at all the forms too, so...
Nice and clean cut. I know that the, the old application, well, I'm not going to criticize it, except for that two right in front of us here.
The only, one last thing I want to point out is that, right, currently, the application fee for the zoning board is $100, and then we charge $5 per a butter notice, because it's certified mail.
Yeah.
So, I guess postage rates are going up, so one of the recommendations might be to $6, you know, because also that's supposed to cover, I don't, we'll have to figure out what the rates are, but...
I pity you, if you fill out those green things for $5, that's like tough.
Well, there's a direct cost in the town, because it's like $5, $4, something, I don't know what they are charging now, but I know it's going up this summer, we heard, so, we'll double check on that amount. But, the $100 fee, I'm going to propose to the select board, I'm not 100% sure yet, but I've been trying to look at the amount of time we typically put in an application. I can say it costs the town at least $500, you know, at a minimum, for processing applications, you know, meeting with applicants, answering questions, just doing the notices, you know, and then time at meetings, writing up minutes, filing everything, notices of decision, so I've kind of been looking at us, tracking like a half an hour here, an hour there, and it's sort of...
You really need kind of a slide and scale, because, you know, that's like, that is your job, and that's what our job is.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to see a homeowner who, you know, puts up with whatever.
Yep.
What he wanted to commit for variance, but different than you get these, you know...
Right, and I'm not saying the town's, you know, you're not necessarily trying to capture every minute, you know, billable hours, it's not that.
Sure.
But, $100 is, you know, it is a source of time that I'm spending on one property, and not looking at zoning issues for a whole, on the whole town, so the community loses ti, you know, so there's got to be a balance there, and I think that's a better way to raise it a little bit, and I don't think it's been raised for a long, long time, so, we'll see.
That'd be an interesting talk, that's good. Okay, what should we do next, public hearings?
Well, uh...
I'm not listening.
Yeah, public hearings.
Okay. So, the first one, we've got a request from 14 Town West LLC through its applicant, Brandon Courier, and Jen Rogoschow of Barlow Signs, for a variance from Article 4, Section 408.5 of the full zoning ordinance, for an additional freestanding sign where two exist at 14 West Road on BID 212026. This property lies in the industrial commercial development, the maximum number of freestanding signs permitted per lot in this zone is one. And they have two. Mr. Barlow?
I'll pull you start.
What?
This is one of those ones where you have to ask them if they want to...
That's right.
Yep, let's go ahead, sir.
I should be clear, no, first of all, you've been warned about variances on this, right, that this, this board doesn't have a lot of gravity towards getting a lot of variances. Did the town, the town, she told you about that? And the other thing is, is that we normal have, normally have a board of five, which is, you know, pretty ward, we don't even have five anymore, we only have four members. And the other woman is a young gal, works at the college, and, you know, you may want to, you have a choice, you don't have to take this meeting, you can put it off, and it may be something other than this old guy tribunal we got here. So, that's an option I can give you. If you, if you do, if you, if you get refused on the variance, then it kind of stays with the lot for a long time, and, you know, if you come up with another idea that has more urgency, whatever, I mean, but that's up to you, I have to dispose of it.
You could postpone for a month if you want to wait till the fourth member is here, because to get a variance, you have to have at least three members of the board voting for it, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not just a majority of the three of us?
No, no, no. That's, that's why you want to have, you know, it's usually applicants like to have four or five members here, so then, in case one of you is, you know, but...
Oh, I see.
If, if we go through with this, and I do the presentation, and it seems to be leading towards denial, do we have the ability to postpone then?
No, let's just start, you're in, right.
Yeah.
You have to make a decision whether you want to go forward or not.
Who breaks the tie?
Who breaks the tie?
Right.
There is no tie.
Who breaks the tie?
Yeah.
You need, you need three...
If you wanted it to be, who breaks the tie?
You need three votes to get a variance.
And, and then the one next month, you would have the additional member?
We would have four people.
Hopefully, yeah, unless, unless something happens to somebody else, you know, we never know, so... She's on vacation right now.
We might, we might pick up another one by then too.
We might have another, we might have a fifth member by then too.
Might have a fifth member by then.
Really? They kidnapped downstairs, or what? Try to talk a little bit.
We're going to get Mike to join.
Hey, guys, I got a coin here.
This is a little unexpected.
Yeah, right, right.
I should have gone earlier. I think we can postpone and notice the hearing, and so they don't have to pay the fees.
Right, right.
And we can not have to re-notice it necessarily, but we...
Yeah. Suggest that to them.
So, do you think there's another person interested in the board?
Well, you know, there, there might be, you know, which would be nice.
Now, what did she ask? What did she, what did she ask?
There might be another person.
All right, we're going to proceed.
Proceed. You're going to what?
Proceed.
Proceed.
Okay, great. Look forward to hearing.
All right, so, good evening, my name is Brandon Courier, I'm from Barlow Signs, I'm here accompanied with President Sean Hanlon of New Car. We're in front of you this evening, seeking relief for the third pylon sign, when two already exist. This is a very unique location, as is, as it's the only car dealership in the area. There are currently two pylon signs, which you guys are probably familiar with. The first one is the Ford sign, which has to be displayed under the contract with them. They cannot change it, it cannot be added to, and whatnot. The second sign is located down Town West Road. This sign cannot be seen from the main road. There is a 40 mile an hour speed limit on this road, most people don't travel that speed limit, which gives them a one-second window to see that sign if they're even looking. So, the sign we're proposing this evening will be located on the westmost side of the property, on Route 3A. This will help aid the wayfinding public. It'll be the main identifier of New Car, with their branded logo. This logo, as you guys have all seen, is becoming very popular, it's been tied in with marketing and so forth, so it's necessary to ensure the success of this new business in your area. This location of the sign fits within the proper setbacks, also size and so forth. There is an existing base in that area, once, had a sign displayed on it, so we are proposing to put this sign in that exact location. Approval of this sign will cause no visual disturbances to anybody in the area, again, it's a very industrial area, very business-heavy, there are a lot of signs out in this area. There'll be no negative impact on abutting properties and whatnot. Not having this sign will cause the wayfinding public extreme confusion, especially when they're trying to navigate there. If you go into Google Maps and say, type in New Car, Plymouth, New Hampshire, when they're driving down the road now, there's no identifiers that says New Car, all they see is Ford. So, if they're, in their head, they're saying, "Oh, I'm going to New Fo, New Car," they could just potentially drive right on by it. So, with the information that I've given, we feel that a third sign is definitely necessary for this property to, again, aid the wayfinding public, and help the success of this business in your town. And again, Sean's here to represent as well, to show that, show support for this as well. Thank you.
What, what exactly is this business? New, New Car, is it, is it part of the Ford company, or?
Yes.
It is.
So, you got a street, you got a sign across the street, right?
That's a different property.
That's a different property, but that gave you one sign there. And then, you've got another sign down the back end, down by your repairs?
Yep, that one is down, I think it was a directional sign.
Or is it, but it's the same, you got your logo and everything on it?
And again, the, the speed limit...
It's on 14 Town West Road, so it's not really very visible from the highway.
It's this one, it's in you.
Oh, yeah.
And that's the one that I mentioned.
Oh, yeah, the body shop. Oh, I see, yeah.
That's the one that I mentioned at the beginning, and you're going on a 40 mile an hour road, you only have a one-second viewing window, if you're even looking at it.
It's really for the people that pull in the 14 Town West to say, "Okay, what am I here for?" Or, "I go..."
Okay.
And these signs were all existing signs, that we were utilizing the same, you know, base and setup and wiring and everything.
Oh.
Those signs were all in place when we bought the building.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Good, sure, Dave, go ahead.
Is there just one entity here?
There's only one business here.
There's only one business there?
Right.
Okay. Butch, hey... You're not, the applicant's not leasing part of the property, it's all part of the same business.
We own the property and lease it to the operating company. So, 14 Town West Road is owned by me, and we lease it to New Car for.
Okay.
So, well, same, same, same ownership.
Okay, thank you.
Well, he's like a subcontractor, I mean, like he's, it's a separate business?
He, this gentleman here?
Yes.
He's our sign vendor.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Well, it's a good-looking sign, I like your logo, I think I've seen him around, there you got the, this is on some other Ford dealers too, huh? All the Ford dealers.
Well, we have another dealership in Tilton.
In Tilton, that's where I saw it.
It's not specific to Ford, it's specific to our company, to our brand.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay. What other questions?
And there's no, nothing, the Ford sign has to stand alone, you said, right?
Yes. Ford owns the sign, actually.
You have signage during your building?
On the manse.
I think I saw that when I was out, yeah.
And all it states is Plymouth, it has nothing, it doesn't say New Car at all.
Yeah. Dave, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. I'll tell you, the, you're a commercial entity, I'm sure you see your tax bill there, you're paying a lot of dough on the lot, and it's a good-looking place, you really keep it nice and clean. And it's, the problem is that we have this limit, and if we give it to one, then you just got to, it just kind of snowballs down the street, and you've got other ones coming in, and they can go, "Hey, you give it to Ford, you know, we want to have another sign up too." And that's, that builds a resistance factor for us, so... But anyhow, that's just, it doesn't necessarily have to stop it, so let's just see what we're doing. We'll do some finding of facts?
Could, could we have a postponement until next month and revisit with a different option then?
They elected to go forward.
Yep, do you want to give them a postponement, Butch, or what?
Well, they elected to go forward with it, so...
Okay, no, I don't think so, we're kind of in a...
I think during the discussion in the public hearing, if there's something that comes up that could amend the application, that might be, allow it to...
Oh, okay, well, there's not going to be much of a public hearing, because we've got nobody here.
Well, there are, there, I don't see anybody on Zoom, but, yeah, so there's nobody.
Yeah.
Just me.
Uh, well, I don't know, I mean, I don't, we really, we don't want to let this guy come back next month.
I mean, we really would like to work with you guys to come to a solution on this, so...
Swimming up the stream here.
Can I just, want me to go through the sign ordinance, to just, so the, the issue is that there's really, it's, we say one freestanding sign per lot. When I went out and looked at the site, yeah, there's the Ford sign, and then this new proposed sign, and then the other sign that we talked about, so I think maybe one question is, is what was pre-existing there? Having some explanation about that, because these are being presented as new signs, so I don't know what was, if something was there last month and came down, then, you know, I don't, we don't see that. But, the sign, that's the entrance sign off of Town West Road, judging by the scale of it, I think it's, it's a bit big for, appears to be bigger than what we would call a directional sign, which has to be six square feet. Directional signs are permitted up to a maximum of six square feet, so that one appears to be bigger, which then means it's a freestanding sign. So, you actually then have what they're calling a directional sign, plus the Ford sign, so this could actually be interpreted to be a third freestanding sign, even though they've been calling it a second, because they're calling that other one as a directional sign.
But, that sign was in place when we bought the building, all three of these signs were in place when we bought the building, so at some point in time, they were all utilized.
Okay.
The Ford sign was there, the other two signs were the that you're referring to, so I look at that and say that that's something that has been happening at that location for some time.
So, the application didn't have any explanation about previous signage there, so that might be some questions to ask about details of what was there, when they came down.
When did you buy the building?
2019, June of 19.
And those signs were there then? Those signs, signs were there then?
Well, the, all of the hardware foundation...
The bases, yeah.
Yeah, the bases, all the electrical, all the mounting, that's all that was there.
The building's business is in very much disrepair, which many of you may know and remember. When we bought the dealership, the Ford sign was on a pallet out front for about 10 years. So, when we bought the dealership, under the terms of our agreement, not only for you guys, it's a pound, it was with Ford, was we would get that sign erected, which I know the town was as interested as I was, on getting that put up, so we went ahead and did that, of course. But, the other two signs were also already existing, you can tell that they've been there a long time, because they're on old brick faces, and that they were utilized for the signage of the name of the dealership on one side, and they, they used it for the parts and service entrance, like I am on the other side. So, when Brandon and I decided we were going to move forward with an existing sign and brand the store, so we're not going to ask for a new sign, we're just going to ask to replace the old, you know, to utilize the same foundation that was there before, we're actually using the same, the same location, using the wiring, the whole nine yards, turning it around. So, you know, again, dealers have been around a while, maybe your rules have changed.
So, you're putting this, you're putting this Ford sign on a foundation that's wired and has been there all the time?
Well, we're going to update it to hold the sign, and then, how, Brandon can explain it better than I can.
Yep, yep, so, the base, if you go to the right top side of the page, that shows the existing base that's there now. So, with the steel structure that's there, we can't have 100% that, that structure will, is sound, essentially, and we don't want to cause any sort of issues in the future of potential catastrophic failure. So, what we would just be doing would be replacing the pole, making sure there's a brand-new pole to ensure structural rigidity, and then the sign on top.
Here it is, here, next to the pickup truck there.
And that base that you're seeing in that top right-hand corner is the same exact base that's over on that side street as well, where the parts, service, and body shop.
My assumption without, I can't say this 100%, sorry, my assumption is when the dealership was built, back in the day, those signs were all utilized for the, in those manners, that they were, one was directional for the hardware to go when you came in, one was the name of the business of the road, and then, of course, the manufacturer sign is where it was at. That's why when we looked at this, we said, "Well, we're, we're not adding sign, we're just, we're just bringing one back to life that was, at one point, existing."
And we're just bringing it up to today's standards of, of construction to make sure that it, it is able to hold a new sign.
Going to close the public hearing?
Excuse me?
You're going to close the public hearing?
Yeah, anybody else want to speak about this? We'll just close the public hearing, and we'll ask if there's, here, we can wrap that. Hold on, did I leave this one here? So, 7:28, we'll close the public hearing. And, so we can't really take any other information pro con, because nobody else is here, so we're going to kind of live with that. And we'll move right on, and we'll start discussing the criteria here, and see if we can find any findings of facts. Okay? Thank you very much, you can sit down, maybe we'll get something. Anybody have any findings of facts on this?
It's, it's, will be located in that previous site that had a sign there.
We don't know when.
Right, we don't know when.
But, we don't know when. Okay.
The sign would be an additional sign beyond that which is allowed by the ordinance.
It looks like the sign fits all aspects for the zoning ordinance.
Uh, sign site fits all setbacks, and...
The entire property is a single entity.
That's true, that's right.
It's a fact.
Yeah, there you go, okay. Put it around finding of facts, then. Okay, any other ones?
The main use for this sign would be to designate, is it, did I hit it right, designate direction to how to get to the location, or is it just to?
To identify the brand.
Okay. Which they don't have on the main road.
Oh, I see, yep. But they got it across the street.
Not really. That really wasn't the intention of that sign.
Okay, which doesn't. Okay. We'll accept these findings of facts. I can read them back. Will be located in previous site of a sign, but we don't know when. The sign would be over what is allowed by the ordinance. Sign site fits all other criteria for setbacks. Number five, the entire property is a single entity. Number four, excuse me. Number five, main use would be to identify brand, which they don't have now on that side of the road. Make a motion to accept the findings of facts?
So moved. Second?
All favor say aye. Okay, so we'll move right on to the old vote here. Petition for a variance of, ba-ba-ba, here we go. Granting the variance would, or would not be contrary to the public interest. Any feelings on that?
I do.
Yep.
The applicant could conform to the, could achieve the same purpose, and conform to the ordinance if they chose. By rearranging the signs that they have permission for.
Oh.
No necessity for a new sign. They could, they could conform if they'd simply rearrange their signage.
Okay.
If I may, may I?
No, you may not.
No, 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 I got it there. So, okay, Butch?
Uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest, would be contrary to the, would not be contrary to public interest. I have to agree with Dave on that.
Okay. They could do it another way. Okay. The sphere of the ordinance would be observed.
Well, our finding of fact was it's contrary to the ordinance.
So it probably wouldn't, you're saying, because it isn't. No? No. Butch? Granted the ordinance would do substantial justice.
I think what June said in the beginning is accurate, which is, to do it for them, you'd have to do it for everybody on the highway.
That's, could be true. Okay.
Tom said that.
Am I?
Tom said that.
Tom said that, I'm sorry.
For the following reasons, the value surrounding properties would or would not be diminished. I don't know if that makes a difference.
I don't think that makes a difference.
Wouldn't bother them.
Unnecessary hardship, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the, in the area, denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardships. Either, there is not a fair and substantial relationship between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision on this property. Okay? This proposed use is, is or is not a reasonable one. Is there an unnecessary hardship?
If they're capable of complying with the ordinance, there's no hardship. And most hardships are land-related, not.
Right.
Butch, you agree?
Yes. No.
Okay, make a motion.
Can I go back over number four? I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
Number four. For the following reasons, the value of the properties would not, would not be diminished. We didn't think they would be, so that was four yes, three yes. Okay, have to take a motion act on this.
Looks like this would be denied.
Yep, it's got summary, it's got a lot, it doesn't make the.
Make a motion that this variance would be denied.
Okay, Butch makes a motion to deny the application, and second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, guys, thank you. Sorry it didn't come out better for you.
Do you guys, um.
Mr. McKinley.
Sir.
Come on right up here and talk to us.
I'll be the chair.
So, Aroma Joe's, sure. Yep, we're all vaccinated.
Let's move it back so we get six feet.
Chair will tip over this.
Hey, so what do you got going out there? Looks pretty excited.
Coming along. I guess first I wanna, okay, first I wanna thank June for helping me out, you know, many, many times during the year developers come in, she's always been very good, so I wanna say that. And I thank the gentlemen for hearing this case. What, you probably know that the corner lot at Boulder Point now is for Aroma Joe's, that Aroma Joe's is going up. Wonderful, wonderful franchisee, he's got many other businesses, well, four other businesses. We get along very good, and I think it's gonna be a great addition to the town. I'm looking for your permission to go ahead and to put a second building on the back of that respective lot. That's the lot that I own. That's TMH 6311, which is the old lot number for lots many, many years ago. I do have, I don't know what June gave you, I don't wanna step on that. It looks like you may already have one, but if you don't mind, is it okay, June, if I pass these?
Yeah, they have it actually in front of me.
Yep, looking right at it.
Okay. So you see, you see Aroma Joe's on the front, and then their driveway is off of Boulder Point Road. And then you will see a rectangle on the right-hand side of this page, showing approximately twenty parking spaces. The regulation in the town, as I understand it, is that for a restaurant, which this would be, now Rapp City is looking to build about a seventeen-hundred-square-foot building, one story. I have met with the gentlemen. They have a store in Tilton, they have a store in Concord, and they have another store where I forget where it is. But the three gentlemen are middle-aged or a little bit younger, conduct themselves very well. We get along very good. Mike Pelletier of Aroma Joe's and I went to Concord and sat with them, had a sandwich. They put out a very good Rapp-type sandwich. It honestly would probably go very well in Plymouth. They make their own potato chips, which are outstanding. So it's, I'm excited about it. I think it's gonna be very good. I think it's gonna be very good for the people coming out of Walmart, especially the people at the hospital that need a quick place to go ahead and get a bite to eat. The parking is the problem, however, your zoning regulation, as I understand it, goes ahead and specifies that one parking space per table, so one parking space per table with four chairs. In asking the gentleman, how many tables do you see in this seventeen-hundred-square-foot building? Knowing that they've gotta have their kitchen in there, too, they see seven tables. So when I look at this, in my simple mind, I see twenty parking spaces is what they like. They have the store in Tilton. It's a little bit bigger store. One could argue, maybe a little bit bigger traffic or more traffic, but not much off the highway. They have twenty-four parking spaces down there. These gentlemen, I don't know exactly, my, I feel maybe three, four years in operation already, doing very well. And I believe that they do know their business, and they are requesting twenty parking spaces to be designed on this lot. I did make application with June today for the next planning board meeting. Needless to say, this is vital to moving this project along. If we look at twenty parking spaces as the target, and if the engineer, when it, when it's done, we have the, we have enough to apply, of course, say two for parking, that brings us down to eighteen parking places. The store typically runs either six or seven employees. So if we take each employee parks, and you'll note that the hammerhead in the back of this lot is designed for employees, that leaves us basically eleven parking places for what I would think is going to be a most successful and appealing business for the town. So I think eleven is, hopefully no one gets shocked at that. I think that's probably right on. Maybe a little bit light, quite frankly. We may be getting some foot traffic from the people up Boulder Point. So that being said, that is my, that was, that kind of justifies my request of the twenty parking spaces. Affording two to handicapped seven employees leaves eleven parking places. We're serviced off of the town road, we're serviced off of, we have water and sewer from the town. The, the, there are three letters of support, I believe, June, if, if the board has them.
There's two.
Two?
Well, one from Peter Ackerman from Rapp City, and one from James Cropsy from Plymouth Square.
And Mike wrote one. Mike Pelletier wrote one.
Oh, I don't think I got that one.
Okay. Bear with me one minute.
I apologize if.
Bear with me one minute. If I may, if I can read this in, and I'll give this to you when we're done. Well, Mike came back from vacation and just sent this to me within the past forty-eight hours. Town of Plymouth Planning and Development Department, attention, Mrs. June Hammond Rowan, Sixth Post Office Square, Plymouth, New Hampshire. Dear Ms., yeah, sure. I am writing in response to a special exception request supporting the construction of a Rapp City facility at the corner of Tenney Mountain Highway and Boulder Point Drive. Rapp City is a reputable, clean, efficient restaurant, offering great alternatives to a typical fast-food establishment. I fully support granting this request to get a fresh, new business like Rapp City into Plymouth, and I would welcome them as a neighbor to my Aroma Joe's store being built on the front portion of this lot. Rapp City is run very well, and I am quite confident this would be a fantastic addition to this parcel. I would ask the board to strongly consider granting the request to make this opportunity viable. Thank you for all you do for the town. Sincerely, Mike Pelletier, President, Integrity Ventures Incorporated, DBA Aroma Joe's. And he, indicative of that, he is an absolute gentleman, extremely pleasant and trustworthy. We get along super. If the board desires, am I supposed to read the special exception, the six points that I wrote?
No, you don't have to. Don't worry about that. It's really, it's good to hear this isn't another pizza place in this town.
Yes.
A lot of those. Some nice fresh salad and stuff would be good.
Any other questions? In the, in the front of the diagram, that's Aroma Joe's with the circular driveway.
That's correct.
Okay. And this little box back there is gonna be the restaurant?
Restaurant is right here. This one. So.
That's big enough for the restaurant?
Yes. Yep, yep, absolutely.
That's great, Mike. How big is that whole lot there? Is it like?
It's two point, two point one acres is what I pay taxes on.
So there's no real problem with the density requirement there at all, huh?
Yeah, the, it does slope up pretty steeply in the back, and there's some wetland areas. That's kinda pushing the development into this corner here.
Is there a, is there an impervious service, surface problem? I know that's not what we deal with.
Yeah.
The planning board would look at that. I think, given the, the total amount of acreage in the amount being developed, it would be not a problem from, you know, eyeballing it, because it's.
Looks like it could be a retaining wall someplace.
Right.
He did drop off the engineered plans for, not just today, but I haven't had a chance to look at them, so. Don't forget, you have to open the public hearing at some point.
Yep, okay, so that's good. We're all set with you, and we'll open the public hearing, but nobody's here for that, so there's nobody for it.
There's nobody on Zoom. We have to check now. We'll make this available for people on Zoom, too, but there's nobody.
Sure, that's right. And they're out there, but you can't really see them. Okay, so I hear no objections to the application. We'll move on. You can stay there, Mike, or you can back off, whatever you feel comfortable with. And we've got this right up here, all findings of facts. And we really can't put in there that nobody wants anymore pizza, huh? Okay, findings of facts?
Applicant wants to put a restaurant at the, at the back of the existing lot. I presume before.
This is actually about putting two, two structures on a lot, right?
No, it's for the parking.
For the parking.
Yeah, because our zoning ordinance says it's one, one for restaurants. It's kind of, you know, again, we have a lot of older parts to the zoning ordinance, so the requirement is one parking space per four seats.
Yes.
For that, and what they're estimating is seven tables with four seats, so they just would require seven parking spaces.
Yep.
The nature of this type of use, which is probably, you know, is, is, he's explained why they want twenty there. So the ordinance says if you're gonna go more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the minimum, then it's a special exception.
So there wasn't any issue about having two, two buildings on one lot?
That's, there's another section of the ordinance that does permit that.
Okay, very good. So, okay.
And then they, so the parking's kinda being looked at while it's the site, and the Aroma Joe's doesn't have any interior seating. It's just a walk-up or drive-through beverage shop.
Okay, let's put that on that. One is Aroma Joe's, it's just a drive-through.
That's a different, there's a whole different problem.
Yeah.
Don't mess with Aroma Joe, I don't think.
No.
If you look at the site, the total amount of parking for their employee, you know, it does put it over the, you know, for this, this additional amount of parking, it's, it's what you're looking at for this use.
So you're, so we're counting on Aroma Joe's keeping moving and not pulling in, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no interior seating for it, so there, you know.
So what should I, what should I say about?
The applicant finds that this, the ordinance does not allow sufficient parking for the estimated customer flow.
Say that again, Dave. The applicant?
Does not believe that the ordinance provides sufficient parking for the estimated customer flow.
Does not, yeah.
Special exception is allowed under this, under its location, though, right?
That's a good one. Additional parking is allowed by special exception.
Okay. What else? That's three. Any other ones? Are we good to go?
Has nothing to do with the building, right?
No. Yeah, just the parking.
They need, they need to reserve certain amount of spaces for employees.
Yes, that's true.
We should put into that, that the abutting neighbor.
Oh, yes, we got letters from the butters and the business owner.
Neighbor support the, support the.
Yeah, I know. So we kinda have both from neighbors of support. U P P T, okay. Anything else?
Project would, what's proposed would not have a negative impact on surrounding properties.
Okay.
Sounds like it's gonna be all one big happy family.
Right. Ready? There you go. Wait a minute, what's those criteria for the, what you call it?
Yeah, I know, they don't have a worksheet for you, but it's in the application, and so you can go through those criteria in the actual application packet.
Okay, well, we don't, we'll just accept the findings of facts and vote on this. We don't have to go through the criteria.
Well, we accept this findings of fact.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And does anybody wanna make a motion?
June, do you think we have to go through the one, two, three, four, five, six?
I would at least, um, in your motion say that you reviewed them and they meet those criteria.
Okay.
Not necessarily, I think you have to read them, and if, I mean, read them out loud, but you can note that you've read them and reviewed them and...
Sure.
I move that we, uh, make a statement that the committee has read and accepted the information in, in paragraphs one through six of the criteria.
Do you agree with that, Butch?
Yeah, and it meets all the criteria, so...
Yep.
Yep, agree with it. You made a motion, I second it, we vote on it.
I move we accept the special exception.
I second it.
Yep. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Great. Okay, Mike, I'll stop.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Sounds like a nice project, I look forward to getting a sandwich there.
My wife's gonna love it.
And a cup of coffee.
Keep in mind.
Good.
See you at the, see you at the planning board meeting.
Okay.
Great. Anything else come up?
Uh, the only, next couple thing, new business, um, communications, there's no communications, but new business, I just put on there the zoning board members, um, because we have...
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, since Patrice resigned, we're down to four members, so time to recruit.
It is.
Yeah, um, if you want, have anybody you want me to contact, you know, email me a name if you might want to announce it here, that's understandable, but, um, you know, they do have to be approved by the, the, uh, select board.
Yep.
But we definitely, it'd be nice to have another member and a couple alternates too, ideally, so, um, you guys are more in tune than I am at this point with, you know, people in the community that might want to do some good service and...
Is, is there a standard that would deny my wife from sitting on this?
What, the two of you?
Well, we all, two individuals. She was on the planning board for years.
I don't, I don't see why you couldn't, I could check with our town attorney, I might want to run that by him, you know, just, I mean...
I could probably convince her to do that, if I gotta come down here, she could come with me.
No, I don't think you should have husband and wife team on the zoning board.
Again, the select board might take some issue with it, but, you know...
Let's not do that, then. She probably wouldn't want any of that.
I know.
Are we off, are we off the record, or are you...
Oh, I don't know.
We're on TV.
Still on TV?
Being recorded.
You gotta, um, we need another one, we need Steffi.
Well, why don't you think about it, and, you know, if you, in the next couple days, come up with any names, I'm happy to contact somebody, or if you want to, if you know somebody, then can...
They don't travel in circles.
Can talk, talk to them, and if they have questions, they can come in, and, you know, I'm happy to meet with anybody, explain all these applications and kind of, you know, if somebody wants to sit down for an hour, I can go through kind of the process, and it's a tough...
I appreciate that, I just wish that, you know, some young people would take some interest, but it's so intricate sometimes, it's really difficult.
I have asked the planning board too, see if there's anybody else, maybe like an alternate member in the planning board could also serve here, but again, there's a lot of night meetings there, so...
You ought to have a board selected, a board selected, a board.
I don't know if they can...
You stick one of them to go on the zoning board.
They can.
Oh, they can't because we're...
Can't they be on the zoning board? Yeah, yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, not about that, about a different topic.
Sure, under new business or...
I think we have to tighten up our methodology of running the hearing.
Mm-hmm.
We shouldn't be carrying on a dialogue with the applicant back and forth. I think some of the things you said were dead wrong, Tom. You shouldn't be telling the applicant, oh, this sounds like a good idea, or this sounds like a bad idea, or you should, variances are very hard to get. I mean, that's, that's not the kind of thing we ought to be doing with them.
Uh, variances are hard to get, I understood that that was already impressed on them. Is it, okay. Well, no, I agree with you, Dave, that's fine. I don't know as if I really want to be chairman, so you can just try it out for a while.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I really don't, I mean, it's, I have trouble, my hearing is...
You got elected, you're it.
Okay.
I just think, I just think it gets a lot, it gets a lot easier to run a, a meeting if we don't start a back and forth.
Well, it shouldn't be back and forth, that's, that's...
That's right.
Where was it at tonight?
Uh, well, go watch the tape, Tom.
Tell you what, we can try to do a better job of talking to applicants and expressing some of that. I did not actually meet with them, um, others in staff here did, so we can, you know, try to, um, try to give some, express some of those aspects and...
Yeah, because we've actually spoken about this, how you should just skip, you should just tell people outright that, you know, we're not, you, you're the one who wants this policy, no variances going on here.
Well, they're hard to, I mean, they should be hard to get, you know?
It should be hard to get.
Right. For a reason, that's what, and they're, in the, you know, the courts and statutes keep changing to make them harder to get, to make it harder for you guys to kind of go through all those criteria and come up with good findings of facts.
Did they see your, your review?
I sent it to them, yes.
Then they know you were recommending that this thing shouldn't pass.
But I don't do that staff report until we get the application, that's the prob-, you know? So it's the time initially, you know, they come in and hear, it's sort of like, here it is, and then on the day it's due or something, or somewhere, you know, I don't know what the exact date they brought it in, but I can't always look at it right then, you know, so it's, um, but we can...
Well, given what we did and given your report, there's no way that this was gonna pass anyway.
Thanks.
It just wasn't gonna happen.
You know, I, I don't know what to tell you.
I just, I wondered if they'd seen your, your report that said you, you didn't recommend this, that this thing passed.
I emailed it to them with the agenda, so I didn't hear anything back, questions about it, so...
It was well done. Yes.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
There we go.
I second it.
All in favor, aye? Great.